All right, we're going to go ahead and call Monday for the retention meeting to order. Roll call.
Kirby, line.
Michelle.
Tom Larson.
Deb Bilton.
Amy Clark.
Pastor Paul is not here, introduce the forum a little bit. So, we'll go to the legislative.
Let's introduce each other today of the United States of America. And to recall that we're just fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's it. I'm on over. So, Pastor Paul's office, raise your right hand. I will hold for you.
I implore you solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member to the City of Montrose, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and abilities, so help me God.
All right. I'm going to wait a second. All right, we need approval to be agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. There is now open forum, and Wright County Sheriff's Department.
We have multiples, so who's coming?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Deputy Mayor with Wright County Sheriff's Office. I'm assigned to the City of Montrose along with Deputy Bardo, who works, who's off right now, Deputy Sencer, and Deputy Larson, and as well with me tonight is Deputy Rudolph. Since January 13th, the Sheriff's Office has handled eighty-three cases in town. Some of these cases that have been handled are as follows: nine medicals, eight home or business alarms, six check for welfare requests, five suspicious person reports, four traffic complaints, two warrant arrests, two theft reports, one motor vehicle crash, and one criminal damage to property and local business. Since January 13th, we have conducted approximately forty-three traffic stops in town, nine citations issued for various moving equipment or license violations, one fourth-degree DWI arrest. Seasonal parking restrictions are still in place between 1:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. until March 30th. Seven snowbird or seasonal parking citations have been issued since the 13th. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, what's a fourth-degree DWI?
Fourth-degree DWI? I can't remember what is, I didn't handle it.
Fourth-degree DWI is the lowest of the terms, so that would be like a point away to up to, what, .15?
I kept thinking .16.
.16 would be a third degree.
Yeah.
Or, you know, any other aggravating factors such as children in the car, or prior to DWIs.
Good to know, yeah.
Any other questions?
I was asked today about, has there been any more recent vandalisms to homes in town that you guys know of? Was that on your report?
I have not seen any reports or handled any reports.
I did not see any when I was checking.
So, also, I just kind of wanted to introduce myself. I recently just passed field training. I've been here, in March, I've been here for almost two years. The thirteen of those months, I was actually overseas, I was deployed. So, I'm still very new to the Sheriff's Office, and I'm assigned to Montrose, we believe, for the rest of the year. So, low and rare.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
I just wanted, I just wanted to thank the Sheriff's Department because we did. Is it off? Who turned it off? Come on. I just wanted to thank you guys because I did contact, is it Lieutenant Sandy? And we had got some complaints that there was people parking and certainly called the sex in town overnight, and people quit back out of their driveways, and he took care of it immediately, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all.
City Council.
I had the city council, the special council, meeting EDA, Chamber of Commerce, and Fire Department in the last room.
Okay. I did Parks and Park Act, we had personnel committee meeting, council meetings, Fire Department dinner. I think that's it.
I had the Lincoln Minnesota Cities Conference, which you were at today, you missed that one. Special meeting, Wright County Board of Commissioners, Wright County Economic Development Partnership of St. Michael, Personnel Committee meeting, Bianca L. Ribeiro.
Trustee's Committee. That's all I have. All right, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item is our activity report. Nothing really too much to point out on that for the most part, just kind of a normal month course for calls and activities for the most part, so. Any questions on that? Next item is I need to approve up to six-month leave of absence for Jake Moen, firefighter with us, effective February 2nd until he returns. He's got some work stuff that he's got to take care of for a couple of months at this smaller town, so.
I make a motion to approve a leave of absence of up to six months for Jake Moen.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye, yes.
Any opposed?
Next thing is just an informational topic. At our annual dinner last week, we give awards out to certain individuals. This year, Tom Linek was honored with Firefighter of the Year. That position is nominated by firefighters, and then there's a nomination committee, and they decide who should get it, and kind of what criteria they're looking for. So, Tom Linek got it this year, or for last year. Mike Marbiton and Willie Bowerschmidt were our top responders for the year. Every year, I recognize firefighters who have attained over sixty percent call rate. Those two are always my top responders, thankfully, so good job to them. And then we pin two of our new firefighters, we pin them after about two years. They get their pins, and they're kind of off probation at that point, but these two not really, they have a couple more months that I can harass a little bit anyways, so. And those two were Eddie Andriault and Jeff Holt, were pinned on that. And then I just wanted to say thank you to all assistance, neighboring community members, council staff, whoever attended our dinner and stuff, made it a great success this year, so. That's all I got for you.
It was awesome food.
Yeah.
Yes, we did not hear anything overly bad, so we were very happy with the service that we got from Hollywood Sports Complex, so.
The extras were pretty good, heated up too, so.
Anybody local, want to add?
Local? I don't think so. They were all not from Montrose.
Mike came into City Hall, he said, "Nobody from Montrose, one, one." Former firefighter Scott Johnson.
Yeah, yeah, Scott Johnson, I think would have been closest one, he's a firefighter now, a water company now, so. Yeah, it was a good success for the raffle and everything, so.
All right, Park and Rec, we just had a meeting last week. We talked about we ended up having to cancel the skate day because we just, Mother Nature wasn't kind to us this year, and we didn't have a good ISO at Currier Field, so we did cancel that. The Park Commission is working on and looking over their capital improvement plan, as well as the park's insurance plan, to get that updated, because we haven't updated that since September 2017. So, they're kind of getting a feel for it, because it's only members on that committee. New business, what are we doing there? Next event is Easter egg hunt, which we are working on that, we've got the date set. But we do need a motion to approve to spend up to $400 for Easter egg.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of Easter egg candy not to exceed $400 for the Easter event through Park and Rec.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
All right, Nikki, any questions?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
I'm Kirby.
Yes.
Motion passes for zero. We also talked about, up on it a little bit on, it's a little bit of ways yet, but the Breakfast with Santa, to try and get more participation in it, and make it a bigger event, which then we would have to look at working with Montrose to do that. We talked about bringing concerts in the park to the city, and we're looking at more of ways to do that, whether it's sponsorship, or whatever we're going to be doing, so.
You still need other personnel?
Well, we're at three. We have three. Sylvia, Ashlyn, and Sue. But Sylvia was not at the meeting on, what was that, Thursday? I was going to say Monday, but it was Thursday that she was at the bunch, so. All right, planning the zone.
At the last city council meeting, I gave you an update on what we talked about, the January 8th meeting, we had the public hearing to talk about fines and abatement processes for co-enforcement. And at that meeting, they decided that they wanted to see some samples from other cities. So, the city planner, Ryan Gritman, and his father, Steve Gritman, who works for the City of Buffalo, put together some different cities' ordinances, and we will be looking at those at our meeting on Wednesday, February 12th.
EDA.
Okay. After spending almost a year pulling the EDA together, because of bereavement issue, I missed the first meeting, and thank you Kirby for kicking it off for me. We have some excellent people on EDA. Kirby's on with myself, and EDA member Patrick Baumgart from Citizens Bank, Joe Rasmussen from CCC, and Sonya Torville, who's our local chiropractor here in Montrose. First meeting was held the 21st of January, set it all up for noon, officers were elected. I don't really need to go through that whole thing. We did a treasurer's report, didn't necessarily have any old business, and that was our first meeting. New business was reviewing the resolution 2019-20 and some past resolutions to kind of give everybody an idea of what the EDA is all about, doing. We are in the process right now, we established a meeting day to be the third Tuesday each month, from noon to one o'clock. We meet here at City Hall. We are looking at future training from Shannon Sweeney in terms of TIF and TAF and all those financing-type programs. Dwayne Northhagen from the Wright County Economic Development Partnership is going to come and speak to us also. What else do we have here? Did I miss anything?
There's just a lot of discussion about little improvements that they were suggesting that we could make downtown, especially, specifically to do with like traffic flow for when the MINDOT comes through here, so.
That turn, yeah, turn lane and zephyr and all that.
And I did contact the city's MINDOT engineer, and she was going to get ahold of Mr. Rasmussen from CCC to talk to him about what he would like to see. They can't do a turnabout like he wants to do, but they do have a lane that they're adding, and she does think that's going to help. But she was going to discuss it with them, and just make sure they're on the same page. I think that another thing that was big that they talked about that day is they really want to put together some type of a program or brochure, so that when people are interested in coming to the City of Montrose, whether it's a developer for housing, or a business to establish a business, they want something that we can hand to them, and so, we're going to work on that. Councilmember Marsla got some examples today from other cities, and I'll also talk to both Gritmans and see if they have anything from the other cities they work in, and let's work on putting something together.
Yeah, we have some information on the website, but it's very outdated. It shows our City Hall and our wastewater treatment plant, so if that tells you anything. So, we need to begin to work on that really quick, because it'd be really nice if somebody's interested in coming into Montrose, that we have some information that has all of the land that's available, what the cost of the land is, what, you know, whether you need to spur from railroad access, or highway access, wherever, they have all those kinds of things in our back pocket to give them, so. Also, we discussed meeting pay for the three business owners, and we put a resolution together for $25 an hour, which is exactly what commissioners are paid for parks and rent and planning and so on, so.
We need a motion and a second to that resolution.
I'll make a motion for resolution number 2020-07, which establishes salaries for the EDA at $25 per meeting.
Second.
I will, aye, and Nikki.
Aye.
Kirby.
Yes.
And Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you.
You talked about the website being updated, you and I talked about this at the relief thing, getting somebody in here to update that. Could we, Tom had the idea of contacting maybe somebody at school to, like, one of the high school students who do work on that? Is there someone, can we?
I would say a high school student or even a college student that's going for some kind of web design.
We're thinking of starting an intern program, and having them do that.
And we actually budgeted money for that this year, too.
2020?
To update the website?
I don't know if we budgeted to update it, I think we just budgeted for where it's hosted. Oh. Well, yeah, I think we did budget some capital improvement for it.
So, yeah, we'd be lucky to start something like that, that'd be great. All right, Wayne.
Council, I've got a few things. We have four buildings with water, and we sort of have flat roofs, and we have no maintenance program on them. Someone were getting up to about seventeen years old. We've got one leaking, plus that new water plant's going to have a flat roof. So, I'd like to get a company in, I've already talked to one, they'd come in for $550 a year, go up on each roof, check them, do minor repairs, if there's any major repairs, they'll do up to fifteen hundred that day they're here. They wouldn't have to, you know, make a special trip out. But they'd be out every year, and they'd keep track of the roof, and if it's going to need a roof for two years, I'm going to snuggle and budget for it.
Are they tarred and rammed, or?
Yes. And we've got one leaking now, so.
Which one?
The lower building, it's wastewater plant. But for the $550, they'd start this year, check them out, and check that roof.
$550 for an annual fee to look at all those is actually a really good price compared to a lot of service agreements. So, it's really a good price if you allow them to do that.
Is that $550 per roof?
No, that's for all, it'll go up a little bit for the fifth wall on the new plant.
And when are they going to come out and look at it?
They'll set up a time once we sign the contract.
All right.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, maybe you can meet with Kevin.
No.
Maybe can increase the longevity of fireworks.
Was that flat roof, too? I can add that, too.
Let's check on that, for sure.
Oh, I believe the top.
Do you think we should do a motion for that, or?
Is that just part of his maintenance duty?
It's a thin his spending, but you could do a motion, but I don't know if you want to hold off, because Kevin, the Fire Department's a flat roof, and I know they've been kind of keeping an eye on that, because that's like almost twenty-five years old, or it is twenty-five years old now. So, it might be something you might want to add to that.
So, that'd be built in the Fire Department? I mean.
Yeah, it'd be built separate, so we could add.
There's some are watered, and some are wastewater, so they'll all split up.
I mean, you can make a motion for this, and then have a guy meet with them, and that way we have it covered.
I would make a motion for the city buildings.
The rest of the city buildings.
The rest of the city buildings, and then pending for the Fire Department upon what they find out.
So moved.
I'll second.
Well, can we accept Deb's motion? Okay.
Legally, no.
Okay. Kirby?
Yes.
I'll hold, aye, Tom?
Aye.
And Nikki?
Aye.
All right, motion passes for zero.
Next I have our John Deere lawn mowers and utility tractor. We usually trade every year at a fairly good price. This year, their program's no longer available, so it's up a little bit. And I also want to up the deck size another foot, so we'd have to go from sixty-inch decks to seventy-twos. And then the utility tractor would be same as what we have, just replaced, because we have all the attachments for it. And it's going to cost about seventeen thousand this year. We own the ones we have, we just trade them in, they're seventeen.
What was it last year, Wayne?
Last year, what was it, well, it was a little bit higher than last year, but.
I think we paid about seven thousand, close to probably ten thousand for the lawn mowers and utility tractor, but Mies, we were getting them from Mies out of Watkins, and they no longer are dealing in John Deere, so we have to somewhere else, and they, nobody honors that state.
Nobody has that program anymore.
It was like a state rollover program, and nobody honors that anymore, so.
So, I've got to get them ordered for this year, and then for next year, we want to, you know, bid around with like a Kubota or something, or a Toro's, if we can do that. Right now, we have to get them ordered, so we get them by spring.
And you're going John Deere because you have the accessories?
Yeah, we have all the attachments for the tractors, so.
And we have that in our budget?
We budget, yeah, we budget for it every year. We budget in the water, sewer, wastewater, parks, all the streets, so, we're okay.
Would you like a motion?
That, you need a motion, because it's over, so, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve Wayne to go out and bring down here, supplies needed for not to exceed seventeen thousand.
What, seventeen, seven hundred fifty?
Okay, not to exceed eighteen. Okay.
What tax?
You shouldn't have to pay tax, though.
Yeah, you're safe.
Second.
All right, Kirby?
Yes.
Nikki? All right, Tom?
Aye.
And I'll hold mine. Motion passes for zero. Anything else, Wayne?
A lot of running subject, I'd like to advertise for summer help, too.
God, that's coming up already.
See, we can't get some high school kids.
Are you going to look at getting the guys we had last year?
One, maybe, but I'd like to check into some high school kids. Last year, we had a couple of good ones, we outside the school teacher, but I had to wait till I'm not with the deploy committee. This year, I'd like to, we get a good applicant, I'd like to hire them.
If we get in the paper in March, we'll hit the kids that come home for spring break.
Yep. Yeah, because then they usually start, what, in April?
May.
Do they start in May?
End of April.
After that last weekend's snowfall, we usually get April. Kingston.
Yep. All right, yeah, go ahead and start advertising.
All right, that should do it for me. Anybody got any questions on any snowfalls, or?
No.
Yesterday went pretty smooth, only maybe four.
Only a couple.
Did you get complaints?
About four.
Four?
Not really very serious, though.
No.
Does it burn at the end of the driveway?
Yes.
All right, moving on to old business, city clerk salary discussion, city clerk treasurer salary discussion.
On Monday, February 3rd, we have a personnel committee meeting, and discussions took place regarding the wage for my position. At that meeting, I provided them with information for consideration from the graph people. And what this graph explains to you is that it goes back to the two previous city clerk treasurers. And what I did is I gave the four percent increase that they would receive annually to show where that position should be in the year 2020. And you can see that for Ms. McCollum, it was at, it would be at thirty-seven twenty-one, for Mr. Powers, it would be at thirty-six, thirty-four, and mine currently is at thirty-one eighty-two. So, I gave that to you for your consideration. It was, an increase of thirty-seven dollars was budgeted for the year 2020 budget, and as you can see in the report that was attached, that amount still is way below what cities of population sizes less than ours are paying, or city clerk. It's, the graph is for the city administrator position, but the position that I'm doing is a city administrator position. The duties and responsibilities are for a city administrator.
Part of the discussion that we did have at the personnel meeting was, this is what, I'm going to just put it out there, the four percent increase of thirty-one eighty-two, which I'm not sure why that already went into effect, because we haven't had performance reviews yet, so it's performance-based reviews, but with that being said, the reviews are on, Deb's review and Wayne's review are on Wednesday, so their reviews are again, performance-based, so if we.
Two, two percent of it is.
Two percent is whole up, which is an, up to two percent is the automatic, it's the other two percent that is performance.
That was my fault. Our old contract used to just be a straight increase, it wasn't performance-based.
Straight increase, yeah, yeah. So.
I can take it back if I need to.
She could deduct it.
Pretty easy to do.
So, just, I mean, checks and balances there, but Tom and I will be doing the reviews on Wednesday for Deb and Wayne, but it is up for discussion right now as to how we want to proceed with that.
And just so you know, I did give you another report that I put together, too. It looks like this, and I'll go through it with you and try and explain it, and if you have any questions, just ask. But Ms. Manson did find where they did do a salary range, and it was actually done in 2014 through the year 2015, and these are supposed to be increased every year, and they have not been done. So, if you go to the second page, I did a spreadsheet for you, and the very first group shows you those steps that you see on here for, we're going to be talking about the administrative assistant position a little bit, hers is first, and then mine is next. And so, at that time when they did this, they were giving employees a five percent increase. Contracts now have it at four percent, two percent for cost of living, and two percent for performance evaluation. So, what I did is, you see on the very top one, that the first step for the clerk, one, which is actually administrative assistant position at the time in the City of Montrose, which is the position that's being done by Ms. Dallin, and then mine was thirty-one dollars. So, if you look at the second graph, what I did is I took that first step, and I increased it each year up to the year 2020 with a four percent increase, which is what they would have received each year. So, at that, in the year 2020, it should be the first step of your salary range for the city clerk treasurer position should be at thirty-seven seventy-two. So, the next, the last graph shows this beginning step of thirty-seven seventy-two, and then the each step increase after that, where you would be, so, 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024. And then this last page, just hang on, remember we're talking about Ms. Dallin's information. So, any questions on that?
Yeah.
Is it clear as mud?
So, under the year 2020 proposed job classification and wage range, step one is thirty-seven seventy-two, but adjusted to year 2020 is thirty-seven seventy-two, so step, that would be the step one, then?
That would be step one, that's. That's first step one should be, yes. Now, as far as I, it'll be, um, two years in May that I've been here, but we talked about thirty-seven dollars. So I guess what I'm trying to show you is thirty-seven dollars is not out of the realm of where it should be at right now. That's what I'm trying to show you. And I'm going to be doing these same adjustments for all the employees in the city.
Yeah, because we did look at, um, well, Heidi, I know about this information on her job description, and then I passed along information from the league to Heidi and Deb on all, um, positions regarding public works, city staff, um, to kind of look and see if we are all in, if we're in line with surrounding communities that are of our size and population. So we are looking at everything's, um, wages and public works, their stuff comes up, their reviews come up in April, so hopefully by then we'll have all the information that we need to go through and do any changes if we have any need on that as well.
Can I just add one thing to?
Mm-hmm.
One thing we've been told, and it was like when we went to the, um, advanced academy, that Wright County is now pretty much considered a metro county. So what used to be the five-county area, you went to seven counties, you went to nine counties now. So sometimes when you're looking at things, um, you also have to remember, not just like city size, but our proximity to where we're at too, because it...
Yeah, we did the analysis back, was it in the fall?
In the fall.
And we did twenty-one cities, and at thirty-seven dollars an hour, you were dead last in, in the ranking of twenty-one cities, so I think thirty-seven dollars is reasonable.
So, um, we don't need a decision on that though right now because performance review is Wednesday. So then if we chose to go that way, we would look at it from the following week of payroll.
Well, what, what you could do tonight is you could make a motion pending, um, a successful performance evaluation and that, um, thirty, if you, you guys are agreeable, I think it would be easier for Ms. Manson for payroll if you would say it's effective next Monday.
Actually, they go back to January first.
Oh, they will?
That's the start of our year.
Oh, shucks.
Um, well, Deb, for Deb, myself, and Wayne, it's January first.
Okay.
For the forty-niners, it's April first. So Deb's would actually be, if she has a successful performance review, it would actually be effective January first.
So if you are in agreement, you could, someone could make a motion that upon successful completion of a performance evaluation, um, if my evaluation is not successful, then obviously it stays at thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents, or no, it even goes down less than that, because I wouldn't get the two percent. So you could do it pending that, effective then, January first, twenty, twenty.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, increase your arbitrary rate to thirty-seven dollars an hour pending a successful review on Wednesday, uh, going back to January first.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All right, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Nikki?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
And I will vote aye, motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, mayoral permits. Well, it's the...
So I put a draft of resolution in here for you, and I did already put a lot of the information. I apologize, because the very first time I sent this out, I forgot to include economic development authority members, so they are on this copy for you. So basically, you need to go through, through this document, um, decide who's going to do what, and then in March, I'll bring it for approval at the city council meeting. Uh, just something that I want to interject quick is that Ms. Manson and I are looking at the official depositories to make sure that we have those right, and we're also going to be meeting with, uh, the Forum Fund people from the lead Minnesota cities to talk about investing some of our funds with their organization, which several things do.
I'm looking for it.
It's on, it's on page two of the three pages, so it's actually a page...
Would you need a copy?
Forty-seven.
No.
Page forty-seven in your packet.
Okay.
Forty-six.
Forty-six is the first page, forty-seven is what you're talking about.
Very end of it.
Okay, so our first one, I know, is acting mayor. Um, now I'm here right now, but it's currently void unless anybody asks any objections. Okay. Chamber of Commerce is Deb as well as Tom. All right, uh, I am the representative, representative for the community ed. Um, EDA, as we mentioned, is Tom, Kirby, and Sonia Patrick and Joe, as well as Deb. Fire department, emergency management is fire chief, which is Kevin Triplet currently. Assistant fire chief is also on emergency management. Uh, fire department council liaison was Ben, so we need a fill-in for that one.
I've been going, and I have no problem continuing to go. Um, I got asked to go, but a few guys are on the fire department, so I have no problem doing it.
All right, anybody else? That's all good?
So good.
All right, Kirby. Um, Highway twelve is myself, Deb, and it was Kirby. Um, I know how long you love that meeting.
I don't think there's a point for us to even really be there. I mean, especially not Deb, but if we send one person, I think that's not bad, but two or three of us, I think it could, it could end up being a little bit of a waste of time because they don't really talk about anything past quick trip, basically, so...
Right, we, we usually just kind of go back and forth now between the end and the end. Um, if you guys are okay with continuing that way.
Do you want to take another council member off? I really think that if it's between you and Deb, it should be fine, and if push comes to show, we can contact someone and say...
Right.
Can you fill in for us? But I've attended all this past year except for one, so...
Yeah.
Where do they have that?
They usually, they have changed it, they had a, uh, informative meeting and independence, and that was a pretty largely attended meeting.
But usually it's...
Yeah.
We, we don't have that on here. I was just looking at that earlier, is that the second Tuesday or Thursday?
It's the first Thursday every other month.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's because it's not really a city meeting.
Right.
You say, uh, city meetings on there, so...
Okay. All right.
Well, you know, I brought up Highway twelve, the board commissioners, and they said it won't happen in my lifetime, which, you know, I don't know what that means, but, you know, it's a long ways away, doing anything on twelve.
Yeah. Do you want to, I mean, we do get some things out of it, and our, our engineers are always there giving a report from district, district three, so they are there, but I think if we would just leave Mayor Otto and myself on there, that's probably plenty. What does everybody else think about that?
You guys agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Um, yeah, because have, have any of you driven on twelve at night with that silly?
They don't, they don't reflect.
Well, they reflect all shadows and things that you don't want to see.
There's a couple that are broken too, that are poking in lanes.
Yeah.
Saw that today when I drove through.
Well, when I went to the last meeting, they were down ten already from, I'm not sure exactly the date that they put them in, but they already had ten out of broke, so...
Can I tell you, my husband patrolled that as a sergeant for twenty-plus years because he worked for West End Public Safety, that area from the Adelma border to Maple Plain. And he said two things about that, that it's either people not paying attention to their driving, or they're not driving for road conditions. That's what's been causing the accidents on that highway.
I think it's worse now with governmental sticks.
I agree.
You know?
There's a lot of people saying that.
It's just like hysterical.
Yeah, there's a lot of people.
Well, you know, when you have a tendency, you, you drive at what you look at, and people have a tendency to look at those home things, and that's why they're missing ten on the twelve.
Right, right.
They also, you know, I don't know what happened this last summer, but they, I don't think they painted the fog lines down twelve either, because they're well-worn and you can't even see the fog lines on, you know, rainy night, so it's an accident waiting to happen.
And I know they have the big street, um, the safety sign right on the other side of coming on road. I don't think that's up and running yet though, but it's been out there.
Yeah, I've seen it lit up, saying slippery.
It's just going to, when there's certain weather conditions is when they're going to use it.
Yeah, I don't have that question actually, I, yeah, so, okay. All right, Streetscape is just Ellen and Sylvia and Graham zones. Um, Kirby's on that one as well, but they only meet once a month, or once when needed, so maybe once a year.
We've decided as needed, yes. And there is one other gentleman that used to be on there that I'm going to try and get ahold of, Hal Gallus, I think is his name.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
The truth is, is that when we met, just so you know, um, Graham and Ellen were okay with just expanding the Montrose Street, Streetscape. Now that we have the EDA up and running, they were okay with that, but, um, we decided they're okay also with just leaving it in place, and if something comes up where like the EDA would like to meet with them and get their input, then we can call them in. Okay?
Yeah. Uh, Kirby, do you still want to do that?
It's fine by me, I mean, unless you, someone else wants to, whenever they meet there, once a year maybe.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me much.
I don't personally, I'm rarely meeting, but, all right, uh, personnel committee is, uh, Mayor Tom Marslake, public works director, and city clerk treasurer, uh, Park and Rec. We don't have Matt anymore. So Sylvia is our chair, we have new members, Sue, Sonny Simon, I hate how I say it, Ashlyn, who's still up before, making it's empty or open, and I am currently the council liaison. Uh, Kirby is my backup. And Jessica is our staff person, but moving forward, we will be having Wayne, um, attending quarterly, so, um, Wayne will be at our March meeting. Um, I did send him a email after our last meeting last week from Park and Rec, and as I mentioned earlier, they are going over the capital improvement plan and the parks and trails plan, so hopefully they'll have lots of questions for you, Wayne, when we all get together this month. Uh, planning zoning is currently Lloyd Johnson. Do we have a backup? No? No? Um, any discussion on that? All right, planning and zoning is Ryan Britman. And Deb, finance committee is currently Tom, Kirby, and Wendy. Nikki did put an interest into that one, um, putting in, you know, just kind of being new, learning the system. Is there any possible way that, and that's kind of the only time she's available because she works at night, so is there any way that the three of them could meet with you?
Uh, then you have to call them.
Yeah. But if it's posted? I mean, because I know Tom still wants to stay on it, and I know Kirby was okay with it, but Nikki wanting to, I don't know.
We can, if you let me know when you have to meditate, you can post it for them.
That's okay.
I can step back to the alternate maybe. I mean, she needs a committee assignment and unless she would be able to do like Park and Rec or Planning and Zoning, then we gotta move everybody else around.
Right, and currently she works at night, so... They're so quiet over there. That's a first.
She's, she's learning.
I know, she's like, her mind is just go, ooh.
Somebody else turning.
Um, yeah, so if we put Nikki into that with Kirby as a backup, or like I said, unless all three want to...
And maybe we rotate, three of us rotate.
Um, the planning and zoning, that could, that could be doable.
That's the second, Wednesday at seven, so...
That could be doable. But then Lloyd?
Yeah, and he's not on anything else either, I don't think.
Well, if Kirby wants, if Kirby is willing to be the alternate of Tom and Nikki can be the finance committee and he can be the alternate maybe.
Well, and if anybody, any of you are wondering about finance stuff, you can come in at any time and talk to Ms. Manson, so...
That's usually like a Thursday morning, Nikki, when it's coming.
When, when is the next one?
We should do it quarterly, so, um, probably around April.
Okay. Okay, so we'll change that then, thank you, Kirby, um, and have Nikki go in as Kirby as a backup. Um, finance committee, that's... Um, utility emergency board, never did that, but that's the mayor and public works director. Uh, Montrose Days is Nikki, um, because she is a board member on that committee, which is good. Um, we also need to, can we have that discussion that we were talking about earlier? Or no? And as to how we're gonna, I know, um, the city is the umbrella for, Montrose is the umbrella for the city, how is that for liquor license?
We don't have enough information on that yet.
Okay, so we'll do, all right, so, um, I'm just going to put a plug out there, anybody wants to help out on Montrose Days, they will happily take you. Um, Wright County Transportation is currently Wendy, but do we do with that, do we get?
We still meet, um, quarterly with the commissioners. So it's, it's like WCAT, but it's not called Wright County Area Transportation anymore. It's, they are a, actually, WCAT is a, trying to think of the word they use, we're like a member of it, but we just meet and get all the updates and any input that we have for.
All right, uh, Wright County Board of Commissions was, is a new one that we added last year, and that's currently Tom. You go every week, don't you? Every week? Yeah.
Yeah, well, then we have one more because I have a special meeting or workshop, actually, which I could attend, but...
Yeah. Um, any perspectives besides Jason? Any for Tony Christian that you know?
Yeah. My catchmark is...
That's right, that's right, we talked about that, didn't we?
Yeah, he was at the last commissioner meeting.
Yeah, and the general article came out for that meeting.
Yeah, it'd be interesting.
For sure. Uh, municipal depositories is the citizens' state bank, Klein Bank, Wells Fargo, Northern Securities, and our official newspapers, Wright County Journal Press.
So Klein Bank doesn't exist anymore?
Yeah, it doesn't.
It's old.
Old national.
National, so we'll change that, and then we want to add, add the Forum Fund to that. We're going to meet with them next week.
Okay. Um, our official newspapers, the Journal Press, and then Deb, go and tell us when all of the meetings are. Can I don't need to go over that, do I?
No.
Okay. All right, so I, I think?
I have a wish.
Yes, I need one.
Could we swap, uh, the commissions, uh, the liaison spots with you and Lloyd for Park and Rec and Planning and Zoning? Just with the conflict of interests of...
You're not planning zoning?
Yeah, why not? Just, just with the, the con, Lloyd doesn't have any, anything else that he's on, and with the conflict of you and your daughter both being on the Park and Rec, if you just switched you two, I think it would handle everything.
It could. Um, I don't have a voting authority at Planning and Zoning. Um, I'm still going to attend the meetings of Park and Rec because I'm pretty much the one that splits all the events together, so however you, it doesn't really matter if I'm liaison or not, um, yeah, it, I mean, I wish we had Lloyd here for that discussion.
I think it could shake a lot of the stuff up, different ideas, different spots.
I don't know how much participation there would be with, um, Lloyd for taking and heading off the other events for Park and Rec.
Well, and I know that on the way out, a couple of people have left Park and Rec and mentioned it, there's a lot of events that they do and it burns people... had mentioned it. There's a lot of events that they do, and it burns people out. And I know you're only working on doing two or three every year, which isn't bad, but...
Right. And actually, the meeting that we just had, we did talk more about the concerts in the park, and the new members are very excited about that. And they're actually the ones who want to up the, it was brought up by our newcomer, our new Commissioner member Sue, to add to, what is it, Santa, adding to that. So I think it's a new group. But again, I'm still going to attend the meetings. So if we want to switch it up, like I said, I wish Lloyd was here for that discussion. And if he even would want to do that. Can we hold off on that for when Lloyd is here?
Yeah, we're not approving this till March anyway, right?
I think so. So, okay.
I kind of need to know though, before I put the resolution together. That's the
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to put him in something that he's not okay with doing.
No, I understand that.
Crickets?
No, I think that's a good idea to mix it up.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, but I don't know if that's actually the one to put, to mix up with. I don't mind going and installing. So, I don't know.
Is there a move afoot to try to get more people on Parks and Rec? With four vacancies?
Yep.
Let's just, we can just move to the March meeting, and then you can approve it. I'll have a resolution number, and you can approve it, and we'll just make the changes after the meeting. I'll have everything else ready that we just talked about. We'll make the changes after the meeting, and then I'll just get a copy for you to sign after.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. When you talk about that, more numbers or whatever, we did talk about, I know like two separate things, but even talking about vacancies, they're just as bad as we are. And if we kind of work together, it'd be better. I don't know.
Yeah, I think so. Two old vacancies.
Yeah, because, well, we'll talk one day later. Administrative Assistant would be back to Heidi.
Okay. And again, what I wanted to talk about with this is Heidi is going to be entering the union. And so she will be eligible for an increase on April 1st. We gave her an increase on January 1st, because she had her six months in, from $16 to $16.64. But when she talked to the union representative, and I think Mayor Otto talked to him too, he had mentioned that she was, her wages were low for, again, this area and for a city our size. And so we want to, the Personnel Committee has talked, and we need to look at increasing the wages for all of our staff. We're going to start losing staff members, and we have some very, very good staff members, especially in our Public Works Department. So as long as she's going to be entering the union, he needs a step scale for her position as Administrative Assistant. And so we would like to get that established now and get that in correctly, so we don't have to worry about that one. And so what he was recommending was $18.50 an hour. And so I did again this report for you. And she does come with experience from St. Michael, and so $18.50 for her is not out of the realm of the step scale that's going to be presented. So I need you to think about two things tonight. If you're okay with this proposed job classification and wage rating for her position, that's number one. And the second thing I need you to think about is how far I want her to go up. And I did include this. If you look at this, she was budgeted to work eight hours per, or 40 hours per week, eight hours in two weeks. And she decided that she wanted to remain at 32. And so if you look at the second one down, if you decide to pay her the $18.50 for what we budgeted for $16.64, you're still going to save $3,827. And then it just goes on from there. If you would go up higher to $18.17, to $19, whatever. I am going to be doing her review, and again, it would depend on her review. But she is doing a fantastic job, so.
We also did the peer review on her too, right?
Yes, yeah.
And what are you doing first?
I will do it in the next couple of weeks, because it'll be due for April 1st. So I'm going to be doing hers and Ms. Manson in the next couple of weeks.
And everybody did the peer reviews on that too, right? For both of them?
They did for both of them, correct.
And then with the April, Wayne, I'm just kind of going without them now. Wayne, more during the peer review, was on your department too, to be ready by April, right? So yeah, we'll look at it. Do you want us to motion again? For, or just discussion?
What do you recommend?
Well, hers would be effective to April 1st, so I guess you could wait.
Okay.
When you meet again for like Personnel and just, you know, see how her review went, and then discuss where you want to start her at.
Okay.
With the union, and then start it there and go up.
Okay. All right.
I think you'd be okay with that.
So even though she's going to enter the union, if she enters it now, it still is April 1st for her, just, okay?
Okay.
Okay, and...
She's in the union now.
Right.
Yeah.
April 1st.
Yeah.
I'll make sure.
And that, not to be pushy, but I don't have to put a new disc in if you can finish.
I did forget something, so I do have to go back quickly. Back, sorry, back to Park and Rec. We did, the Commission made a motion to give Tom Reinick $75 for working on all of his hard work out on Coverfield during the ice rinks and all that kind of stuff. So they recommended to give him a Visa card under approval tonight from the board. So I will make a motion to have City Staff purchase a $75 Visa gift card for Tom Reinick.
I'll second that.
Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
I vote aye. Nikki?
Aye.
All right, motion passes four, zero. I totally forgot, sorry about that. Upcoming meetings, we know that it is Planning and Zoning is Wednesday at 12, 7 o'clock. EDA is Tuesday, the 18th at 12 noon. Next council is pending, depending on what, if we have anything on the agenda. Most important is the presidential primary election is Tuesday, March 3rd, at 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. here at the Community Center. Park and Rec is March 5th, council meeting March 9th, Planning and Zoning March 11th, and next city council totally only March 23rd. Acknowledgements, I'm going to go with Tom Reinick, of course, for Fire Chief of the Year, as well as what I just mentioned, his hard work and dedication to the city, and trying to get our ice rinks up and going. Jeff Holt and Eddie Andrade, with their two-year penning with the fire department. Mike and Willie, who has worked for many, many years as top responders to the fire department. Anybody else?
Thanks to Hollywood Bar for their catering job, everybody said it was great. And like I said, leftovers that I bought, they were still good, heated up, so.
Can I call into a adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. We need a second. We need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any votes? We're adjourned.
Do you want to see someone oppose in the adjournment?
Can I be first?
That was pretty good. You really...